Kelly, you online?
Yes, it looks like you're still waiting for a couple of board members, but if you, since we're not voting, if you'd like to get started, feel free.
Go ahead and get started. I mean, it's 6:30, right? Yep. We got four. Looks like the first thing on tonight is a wastewater treatment plant expansion design.
Yes, Mayor, you're correct. Thank you. This is Dave Meyer, staff engineer. I want to kind of walk you the board through on the wastewater treatment plant expansion, where we've been, where we are right now, and our plans for moving forward. So where we've been, the draft of the wastewater treatment plant master plan that was received from Jake Jacobs a few weeks ago, and Jacobs presented that to the board in September on the findings, and no surprise there that the plant expansion was recommended. We've been exceeding our biological loads at the current plant, peaking at eighty-five percent in our hydraulic loads as well. State is mandating that we have to be in design now on that. The final version of that master plan is expected to be received after, shortly after Thanksgiving. We're working on finalizing that right now. And just to recall, we contracted with Jacobs today, in fact, for the wastewater utility plan that the board approved last week. And that plan is a regulatory requirement for the plant's expansion and for SRF funding, so they are moving forward on that as we speak. So regarding where we're at now, we received an updated project schedule from Jacobs as part of that master plan, as part of finalizing that, and that shows a pretty rigorous timeline that we have to follow to submit all the required state documents, allow time for review, meet the SRF application deadline, so we have construction available when we're shovel-ready, hit all the board meetings when needed, complete the design and complete construction in early 2024. So for that hiring of a design engineer, we conducted a qualification phase for a design engineer, and we posted a request for qualifications on our website about a month ago, and we received statements of qualifications from two firms. One of those firms was Jacobs, and the other one was RG and Associates, and staff reviewed those SOQs and unanimously selected Jacobs as the most qualified from those we received. And as such, we've since requested Jacobs to proceed with preparation of a proposal for the scope and fees for the engineering design and construction management services for the plant's expansion. And I've been working with Jacobs and other staff members here closely over the last several days on that. We're expecting to get their numbers, their proposal in by next Monday, and once we get that in, staff will review that proposal and further negotiate it with Jacobs as needed, and provided we can reach an agreement on those scopes, on that scope and fees, staff will be taking its recommendation for an engineering design to the board on December 8th next month. The other thing that we were talking about internally here is project delivery options to use for the wastewater plant expansion. We considered a few different options that are out there, and we selected C Mar. Again, that's construction manager at risk as the best way to move forward with this project, and we considered the more traditional approaches like design bid build and design build methods. And we looked at the advantages and disadvantages of each one of those, and we feel that for the C Mar delivery method, the advantages, you know, are far outweighing the disadvantages, especially since we have control right now to select the contractor. And we believe through our qualifications that we're going to go through here very shortly, we can obtain a highly qualified and trustworthy contractor to efficiently execute that C Mar project delivery. A lot of the other delivery methods would be a little bit more staff, would require a little bit more staffing resources that we don't quite have right now. Design bid build, for instance, has some risk, and they all do. You know, for design bid build, you know, depends on the bids received, and taking the lowest qualified contractor could lead to change orders with higher costs, so we did look at all of those different pros and cons of each, and again, we felt C Mar was the best way to move forward. That's the same method we're using, by the way, for the water treatment plant. So we will be issuing an RFP for a C Mar contractor later this week. I'm working on that RFP right now. And after that gets publicly announced, that will involve numerous site visits from contractors and discussions to help them with their proposal. And that will follow up with a review of their proposals and most likely an interview, so we can select the best contractor that we can. So now, in terms of moving forward, a couple of things here. Again, going back to that schedule that we're trying to hold, assuming we're moving forward with an SRF loan for this, and I might kick it over to Tyler and Judy if they're there, if they're here to talk a little bit about that. We have to, we're trying to meet a January 22nd, 2022 application date for that. And all the precursors for the submittals, the state requirements, the regulatory requirements have to be submitted and reviewed prior to the application of that loan submittal. And again, that's assuming we're going after an SRF loan for construction. Again, the December 8th board approval for the contract with Jacobs pending successful negotiations on the fees and scope with Jacobs, and the other thing we'll be coming forward with on December 8th is the action item that will include our project delivery method recommendations, which again will be the C Mar process. If all goes well, and we get a contract executed in a timely fashion, we will be holding our design kickoff meeting in mid-December. We're looking at about a year for design and about year and a half to two years for construction on that with completion date either late 2023 or very, very early 2024. That's kind of all I had to say right now, and if Judy and Tyler are there, if you guys can speak for a few seconds about the financing aspects of this for the engineering fees and the construction and what we were thinking on that, if not, I'd be happy to walk the board through that, too.
Good evening. It's Jude. So to speak to Dave's, I wasn't prepared to do that tonight, Dave. I wanted to speak with them about adjusting the fund balance on the water, which is, comes just in a little bit. We're going to talk about that pending that. I think it can. So we're going to walk through also the water plant expansion, so maybe we follow it up knowing that that we're going to have a very similar conversation with the wastewater. We have the same amount of users, et cetera, et cetera, but I wanted to make sure the board is with us and in agreement before we jump into something moving forward with an assumption that they're not comfortable with, so. Again, I wasn't really prepared to do that tonight, but I think we might be a tiny bit premature until I can get a little bit of feedback.
Okay.
Thank you, Jude. Okay. Dave, are you good? Then you're done?
I'm done. Yes, thank you.
My first question is, yeah, yeah, there we go. Is our new town administrator being copied on everything?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is our new town administrator being copied on everything?
She will be, yes.
Not at this point, Troy, but we are working to set up an email for her, so she'll have things in her inbox by the end of this week, so start date is the first. She's not.
Right, I know that, and the reason why I ask is because I want to make sure that, you know, before we go, this is a big ticket item, okay? There's a lot of things going down. There's other funding strategies out there. I want to make sure that we're not missing any opportunities to overturn over any stones out there. That's why we have this person on board now. And I want to use everything she's got to bring to the table to make this, you know, under budget, okay? And move along, and I know you guys have done your homework. I'm pleased with Jacobs. I'm good with all that and the C Mar. But it's about the funding and the timing and all that. I want that oversight, and I want her to come in and go, why didn't you guys consult me? We could have done this instead, you know, so let's make sure that she's plugged in, you know, that's my take on it. I'll take, I'll leave it to the board members at this point. Anybody want to comment?
Yeah, I just had a question with the, I know with the RFQ, you said there was one other company that did respond as well, and you said that the staff unanimously felt that Jacobs was more qualified. Could you touch on that a little bit as to why you felt they were more qualified?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, the main reason we chose Jacobs is because of their experience. We've worked with them. We are very pleased with their progress thus far. The other firm did not demonstrate as much project experience in the design of a wastewater treatment plant that Jacobs has demonstrated. That was the primary reason. Other factors that we looked at were, you know, proximity of the staff, the staff members that are involved. The RG and Associates, although they do have an office in Fort Collins, I believe, the office that would be running this project is based out of Denver. Again, we just didn't see their qualifications as strongly as we did for Jacobs qualifications.
Okay, that's good, and from what it sounds like Jacobs has been doing a good job, I just want to make sure that we're, I mean, I appreciate we're working with them on a lot of projects right now, and I'm glad they're doing well, but I want to make sure that it doesn't become a just a given assumption that any project we have goes to Jacob, that if they're most qualified, absolutely, let's do it, but we just need to make sure that we don't ever get to a point where it's just kind of given to them.
Yes, absolutely. We're making them do their homework on these things. We're going through the qualifications processes. We're making them propose fees. We're negotiating fees with them. On, you know, everything that we have dealt with, and we continue to, we will continue to do that moving forward.
I'm glad to hear that.
Anyone else? Okay, let's make sure we're looking at all funding strategies out there. Jude's going to talk about it later, but I want our town administrator to be highly informed here. See all this talent come to the table, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, and I'm fine with Jacobs myself, but Trustee Gator is absolutely right. We don't want to just award everything, but it needs two things. It makes sense to, they're related. They're related, and it makes sense to keep it under one control, so. However, we'll get to the other one later. All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Next item. Twenty twenty-one position, a parks and recreation position, possibly, possibly.
Yeah, that's me. Thank you, Mayor and Board of Trustees. This is Lori Woodruff, HR Manager. I am reporting tonight on behalf of Trustee Gator's earlier question a number of meetings ago about some possible options for staffing our Parks and Recreation merger that we are suggesting as part of our position request for 2021. As you saw in your packet materials, I outlined on a spreadsheet three of the most likely options. One would be, of course, remaining with the Director of Parks and Recreation that we originally suggested. Option two is a Parks and Recreation Manager position, not quite at the same level of a director, and therefore you could reduce pay. In addition to that, our current Recreation Manager would be very qualified to fill both of those positions for a nominal increase in salary for the extra workload and FTE supervision that would be involved, including moving the PAB responsibilities to that manager. The third option was to suggest both a Parks Manager and a Recreation Manager, but again, not as fiscally prudent perhaps as option number two. You know, the reasons for proposing this, again, I believe, are in concert with the goals and objectives of the town. One would be to help reduce some of the workload that's occurring in the Public Works Department by moving parks over to recreation. It's a very natural combination. Departments, municipalities, states across the nation all use that model because it provides a great deal of synergy, efficiency, resourcefulness. It's a great way to begin to look proactively at things like open trails and park development, et cetera, facilities, whatnot. So it's a very logical move, and so we're trying to look ahead, in particular with where our rec department will be going in the future. I have great dreams and goals for that department as we move forward, and I realize that we're solving many other problems at the same time. But this is, this is one of the heartbeats of the town. You look at the library and you look at the rec department, and those are going to be part of the reason why people want to stay in Wellington. They don't want to go to Fort Collins. Yeah, they can go there to go to work, come back home and live and breathe and educate and play in Wellington because we are going to be the coolest place in the world to be. So part of doing that is about beefing up this recreation group and giving our town the expertise in the higher ease that we're making to be able to proactively work in this area. Thankfully, we recruited a fantastic recreation manager. We stole this guy. And we have a golden gem right now who has the capability to move this department to change the direction of recreation completely and do it on a zero-based budget. How is that for surprising? Zero-based budget. How many rec departments do you know can do that? Not very many. So this is a phenomenal, fiscally sound, great forward-thinking movement for us, and we really want to move parks over there, put them together, and unify that group so that the strategic efforts can go forward with really great long-range planning for the town. So, Trustee Gator, I guess my best suggestion at this point would be option two, which is our Parks and Recreation Manager option. It's the least expensive but still allows the town to move forward in a strategic manner when it comes to planning in this area. So this, I believe, would be the staff's recommendation at this point in lieu of a full director. If, in fact, we feel that we truly cannot afford that proactive step at this time, let's go for the manager and then work towards that director in the future so that we can continue to build and grow in these areas. I think that's all I had to say. Any questions?
Yeah, Trustee Jerome, you sit on the Parks Advisory Board. Have you heard any feedback on anything like this?
I haven't heard any feedback on this from the board, the Parks Advisory Board, but I have my own opinions on it. And I'll just go ahead and take that opportunity since you called me.
Absolutely. You know the board. You know the board is here.
I think this is probably one of the smartest moves we could make at this juncture. I would actually lean more towards a director, but I'm willing to compromise. Here's the reason why. And this is not only just the Parks and Recreation Department. This is, my opinion has changed over this past year about staffing levels of this town. Many of you know, in past budget cycles, I've been a staunch fighter to keep our staffing levels lean and mean and pinch pennies here and there. It's become very evident to me this past year that that was not the best approach. We are being a reactive town. We're trying to react months behind things that are occurring, and and I think a lot of that has been our staffing philosophy up until now. I think we need to really look hard at adding staff to provide the basic services that the citizens of this town expect and deserve, and I don't think right now we're even close to being staffed to give quality service in any department. We're just, we're way behind the eight ball. I mean, we just talked about a wastewater treatment plant that we're going to start a construction process on that'll make two major construction projects running simultaneously with a department that has two engineers on staff to manage that on top of the general maintenance items and the stuff that just has to be done every year anyway. So I've had this conversation with Kelly, and I asked her to talk to other members of the staff, but I think we need to look at staffing up in 2021 and as quickly and efficiently as possible because, I mean, last meeting, we had several complaints about our building department. And I don't think it's because Cody's doing a bad job. I think it's because Cody cannot keep up with his workload. There's not near enough people in his department to handle the, everything that comes his way. I mean, so what do we know that Cody's doing right now? He's handling a master plan, a strategic plan. He's doing developments, plus he's got basement remodels, construction, or commercial property, throwing in plans to do construction. I mean, that's one guy doing a lot of stuff, and that's not, that's just one department, and I know that's across the board, so I kind of got off on a tangent, so circling back to our Parks and Recreation Department, we need somebody that can handle the Parks and Recreation together. Get that off of Bob's plate. I mean, Bob's got enough to worry about without having to worry about making sure our Parks Department is up to snuff, and, you know, the mowing's going on and all the other maintenance items that go on with that, so we really need somebody that we can transition into that leadership role and can run with it, so. I'm in favor of it. Like I said, I would be more inclined to go with a director, but and willing to compromise for a manager, so.
Fair enough. Thank you for the points. Anyone else? Rebecca?
I am also leaning towards the director. As much as I am so very happy to hear that we have such a competent and awesome rec manager right now, I don't think I don't think we're accomplishing the goal by then adding Parks, that same person. I think we need more, more leadership and I mean, maybe that might be a fantastic candidate for the director role. I'm not sure, but I think that we are not doing justice and not giving the, giving those responsibilities appropriately just by adding them on to someone who already has a full-time job. So that doesn't make sense to me. And I think this is, again, such a huge thing for Wellington and what makes it lovely to live here, so, and needs to be more. So I am definitely leaning towards the director, too. I don't think that we should, this is not a clearance item, I don't think.
Any other trustees, please?
Mayor Hammond?
Yep.
I have a quick question for Ms. Woodruff. I noticed on the town's website that you have a survey up regarding the Recreation Department. I'm very involved with the local Recreation Department, so I'm aware of the demand, but I'm curious, based on that survey, what, have you had any feedback from the citizens about the demand or the wants or the needs regarding our Recreation Department?
I would, oh, pardon me, I would have to check with the Recreation Manager at this point to find out what feedback is being collected. I do know that he has intended on numerous occasions to be able to reach out to the community and find out exactly what are their needs and how can the rec department program and meet their needs as best as possible. Even in COVID, there are still opportunities for us to be viable and relevant for the town. So at this point, I would have to ask him what his feedback is thus far, and I would be happy to report back to you about that.
Thank you. I think that would be interesting information to share because community engagement is a big item for this board. So to have that feedback would be great, but I agree with the other trustees that have expressed their support for the director role. I see and understand the value in that, and I appreciate the time and effort that you put into showing us all of the options because I think that's really important for decision-making, is really being able to see that full picture of the options. So I also appreciate Trustee Gator requesting for that information because I think it's been very helpful in providing a justification and influencing our decision-making, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I appreciate Trustee Gator. Thank you very much for asking the question because it did allow us to more thoroughly review our requests and consider what were the goals, what are the aims, and what are the costs associated with that. So thank you again, Trustee Gator.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Trustee Whitehouse, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say that I was looking at option two at the beginning of this, but I think so, which I think is a great move, but based on certain comments from other trustees and certainly from Ms. Woodruff, that I would be, again, either option two or three would be, I am leaning towards option three, and again, do appreciate Trustee Gators for asking these questions to allow this subject to be explored a little bit more thoroughly, so that's great.
Somebody else? Trustee Gator?
Had a question with the staff members that are going to be moved over from the Public Works Department. Are those, what type, how many staff members would that be in? At what levels of staffing are they? Are they all just technicians or what? Who are we moving over?
On the spreadsheet, I did outline, there are three Parks Technician FTEs. Two of those are very similar positions, and the third one would be an irrigation-type technician primarily dealing with the irrigation of the park systems. So those FT would be moving over, and so obviously there's increased supervision, management, evaluation, professional development, and then all of the ongoing issues related to inventory and supplies and repairs and dealing with troubleshooting and residents complaining about an issue. There's also cyclical or cyclical, depending upon me, I want to say the word, activity that happens with respect to parks, like the leaf cleaning activities and what happens during the dormant season. What we're doing regarding pruning and various things that have to happen in all of our parks in order to keep them clean and neat and also disease-free, hopefully longstanding, great, healthy environments that will go on for fifty more years so that people will come to our parks and see those elms and not down the middle of CSU. So lots and lots of things have to be accomplished there, but that's just the maintenance side of it. There's also looking ahead at how we can strategize for future park growth, future open space development, parks, trails. So many opportunities to make this a viable, people come to Colorado because they want to be outdoors, right? They want to be biking and walking and talking and picnicking and having a great time. And here we are at the gateway to Colorado. We should have a park structure that's phenomenal, and this is just one step towards making that happen. I probably waxed way too eloquent there, sorry.
You did a very good job. It was a fantastic presentation.
I like to stand up on my soapbox.
No, and I appreciate you taking the time to put this together. My request would be that we move towards the option two. I can understand the standpoint of needing to bring in additional staffing. From my perspective, I don't disagree. I think those are important things for future, and I think this moves us in that direction in bringing it all under one, getting it out of public works that frees Bob up with his staff to focus on these major projects. But I understand that there's these great things with recreation. There's so much potential, and I think this gets us moving the direction. And I'll kind of reiterate what I said to last meeting. As far as like the planning, the future planning and direction that we should go, I know I've talked to a couple of, or at least one member of the Parks Advisory Board. In some ways, feels like I don't do a whole lot. I think that would be a great way to say, instead of saying we need to hire a high-level director, let's really lean on and use these volunteers we already have in the community and say, you guys, you put together for us, what should the future of our parks look like? And really give them something to do, right? So it's not just we're volunteers that occasionally hear something, but
Absolutely.
Let them take that on, have the manager manage things for now, because I think really, as great as it would be to put all these things in, we don't have unlimited funds. We have massive issues and finances, especially with water rates. We're getting ready to do the same thing with sewage, so I think, yes, it's only $80,000 difference. It's not that big of a difference. But I think from our standpoint, the things I'm hearing from people But I think from our standpoint, the things I'm hearing from people, it's, they would love to see a rec center someday, but they're, they're upset right now about their water bill. They're upset that their water's not quality. We haven't even talked about the increases to the wastewater. And I think those really need to be the area of focus before we start putting a bunch of finances and resources into. Really expanding in rec. I would say let's do the planning part with the Parks Advisory Board. Bring the manager in, focus that. It's not a lot, but it gives us something that we can focus into those other areas. That would be. My preference with which option we go with, but thank you for the presentation.
And thank you.
Uh, any other board members?
I want to say thank you, Lori. Your enthusiasm and expertise are overwhelmingly wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You know, the town in Wellington is a great place and I sell this place every single day when I'm recruiting new employees to come and work for us. And when I'm selling it, I have to have something I believe in or I'm a horrible salesperson. I say liar, liar, liar right on my forehead. So I really believe in this town. This is a fantastic place. You have so much. And I just can't wait because you're just right on the precipice of blooming. So thank you for your support and thank you for listening to my presentation.
One last thought, Lori, before we let you go, uh, appreciate it all very much. I, I really. Am enthused as much as you are because our parks are really a big deal to our town. And we have, and they're recognized, they are recognized around the state. Uh, I, I, I kind of might go with option two because I'm, I'm for promoting from within.
Yeah.
More than looking for someone else. I like to give our people a chance to rise, you know?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm more about that than, than that other than you can, we can add to the staff as it, as it will, but. Everybody's points are great. We're greatly taken. I appreciate trustee Jerome's reflection as well. And uh, so uh, I'm looking forward to seeing us move forward with something here. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Uh, we're going to move on to item three, the uh strategic plan draft 2021, 2022.
Thanks, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Um, before you tonight is the draft that we worked on during a um Board of Retreat. So just to go over some high-level items that we have, we've got the mission and vision. We've got four key areas of focus and then some goals. Um, so I will zoom in to the mission statement here. So a mission statement is the, basically why do we exist? So what we currently have, and this is obviously still draft, so if you don't like it, um, let me know and we can tweak it. So. Our mission statement as today is we provide outstanding municipal services. To enhance the quality of life and provide opportunities for our community today and tomorrow. How does that feel? Do you like that as a mission statement? Getting some thumbs up? Okay. All right. And then let me scroll over here. So our vision statement. A vision statement, as you recall, is aspirational. It's forward-looking. It's uh future-looking of what do we want to look like? So our vision statement reads Wellington is one of the best small towns in America. Recognized as a great place to raise a family, own a unique business and have access to a wide range of recreation and cultural amenities. Any feedback?
So I just had a question. When we talk about cultural amenities, what are we trying to communicate with that? I was a little confused by that portion of the statement.
What is the group recall? What, what are we?
Yeah.
I mean, I like it. It's, it's a good, it's one of those vibrant buzzwords, right? So I think, to me, I think about um, you know, art, I think about um, u- unique experiences. Um, but that might, that might speak something different to other people.
I think maybe what we were going for was um sense of, like a sense of community, like trying to capture that instead. I agree with trustee Gator, cultural amenities is. A great word, but I have a hard time trying to. Tie that in with our community. We do have some great murals and things, but that's, you know, I think an area that there's a lot of opportunity for development before we. Highlighted vision statement.
Yeah.
Make, is there a way that we could um? I mean, does the board agree that maybe we're looking for like sense of community or something? Along those lines instead of like cultural amenity, or we could just put a period after recreational?
That sense of belonging is something that came up multiple times and I don't remember exactly where we left it off, but it was something that was really important to me. I think. Uh, we're not going to be able to like. Redo this though in this session, if that's something that we wanted to change from our original strategic plan conversation. So. We might need to take this one offline or at least do a little, I, I just. I, I can't imagine that we would be able to redo this in this session considering how long it is initially.
Yeah, probably.
Cultural gathering, yeah, there too is that sense of community. I mean, because when I think of culture, it's not that's a bad thing, but I think more of. You know, ancient quake cave dwellings or artifacts or things which are none of the things that I would associate with Wellington. Um, so yeah, if we can maybe just work out other than that, I think I, I like it overall, just maybe a tweak that wording at some point to. Fit whatever that idea was. And I totally agree if we want to just maybe try to get some emails from board members to. Share their thoughts on what we might have been trying to communicate because yeah, that was a long time ago that we did our brainstorming session. So I don't remember exactly what we were trying to get at.
It is a vision statement.
Yeah, so it's not now, it's.
Meaning we don't have it today, but we're looking for.
Right.
But you're right, you guys are right. No, you're absolutely right. Right? We don't have any cultural amenities. There's not very many.
Uh, what about the auction in Friday night?
What about Soul Square, Cross Street?
We have a lot of big murals, for sure.
Got murals. We don't have enough concerts. We don't, I, I don't know, man, you know, I, we got to work on it. We, we don't have to. We don't have to decide that right now.
But for the rest of it though, talking about raising a family, owning businesses and recreation, those are spot on for me.
Yep.
But the idea of it being home, that's, that's the other part.
Yep. Okay.
Well, we can work on that one. So we'll come back to that. I'll circle, I'll highlight that section. Um, and maybe we can try to come up with something new. If you have a brilliant idea in the middle of the night, let me know.
Right.
All right. And then our four key areas. So the first one is intentional growth and development. So the feedback I'm looking for is. Are, do we like, first of all, the four key areas? And then also, how do we feel about the goals? I know I included. A very large breakout, the Excel table, which is more of the living document for staff to continuously update. Uh, but in general, are we aligned with what the board had intended for these areas? So. The top goals for intentional growth and development. Goal one is balanced and resilient revenues. Goal two. Identify, attract and retain commercial development and businesses. And goal three is comprehensive plan, alignment and execution. We've got a thumbs up. We got a couple of thumbs up.
We had a lot of feedback on the comprehensive plan that wasn't very positive on the surveys and stuff. Did we need to think about that?
Oh, feedback's great. Uh, all feedback's good feedback. So.
Okay.
These are, we're still working on the.
Okay, so the alignment and execution, that, that, that does work with all the feedback that we're getting. We're, we're going to adjust.
Sure. If you're talking specifically about the survey, that is something that we're working to uh build out more in depth. So. Um, but in terms of the goal of finishing the comprehensive plan, that's what we're really looking um to nail down tonight is saying that that's a key area of focus for us.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, the only thing that I'd like to, and just as we, and that's probably more than we drill down on things with um goal number two, this is, I think, another thing that. Came up in the meeting last week was just. I, I want to make sure in the sense of when we're saying we're trying to attract and retain businesses that it's not necessarily. We're trying to attract businesses by offering tax breaks or things like that. I think we need to look at. What is the environment that we're creating for businesses to want to come here? Because that was some of the feedback that also came out of last Tuesday, at least from those that chose to share with us. Made it sound like we're maybe not creating really a great environment for businesses to be able to come into and thrive. So, and that's probably again goes more into, I think I like the goal. I just want to make sure that. When we're going through the drill down on that, that it's not, we're going to attract businesses by offering money or tax breaks or whatever. If you bring your business here, it's making sure that. Are we providing an environment as a town that businesses want to stay in? Number one, and number two, the businesses want to come here. They want to open up a shop here. And I mean, as we talked about in the vision statement, right? We want unique, different types of shops. So we're not saying, well, we want this type of business, but not this type of, that makes sense.
Okay. Sounds like the three goals are, three goals are appropriate, just in the, in, in the, in the, uh, like you're saying, you're. In your uh finite area.
All right, then our next key area of focus is sustainable infrastructure. So goal one is ensure adequate current and future water resources, treatment and delivery. Goal two is develop long-term funding strategies. Goal three is plan and develop purposeful facilities. Goal four is enhance and explore partnerships. And goal five is create opportunities for transportation and stormwater management improvements.
With number five, with the transportation piece, what were we trying to get at as far as transportation? Like improvements such as like the bridge and another highway off-ramp? Was that going towards like mass transportation? What were we trying to get at with the transportation improvements?
Let me pull it up here just a second. So our um, in the weeds Excel table we have is adopted streets uh classification master plan, which is transportation-related. Um, improvements to certain sections of highways and the roads, I-25 and Highway one interchange. Adopt a transportation master plan. And then as related to stormwater, um, adopt and prepare stormwater uh management and master plan. So it's nothing like a high-speed rail or anything like that. It's more nuts and bolts of our, our key areas. So if. Um, if we need to expand on that and the goal, um, we can certainly say.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, to me, that's good. I just wanted to make sure that was what we were getting at. So as long as that is the case, we're good on that one.
Okay.
I got a question. Wh- wh- why would we say, it goes without saying, we're going to create response, opportunities. Why wouldn't we just say we're going to enhance transportation and stormwater management improvements?
We can do that too.
I mean, I'm just saying, creating opportunities means we're, we're out there fishing for opportunities to do it. I know we're going to do that. That means funding. Uh, but we know, I think we know what, what we have to do in a lot of ways. I, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
So did you say um enhance transportation and stormwater manage, or how did you say it? Let me rewrite it.
I, I, I just threw that out there. It's not the best way to say anything. I just enhance. Upgrade, enhance, improve.
How about improve transportation and stormwater management?
Sounds pretty simple.
I like it. Look at us. This is great. All right. Okay, anything else on? That one? Okay. Community engagement. So goal one, build awareness about the town of Wellington services and programs. Goal two, improve access to local government. And goal three, develop communication strategy for town's water conservation plan.
I like those items and I, I don't want to go down into the weeds, so I won't go down there, but I know that most of the options that were around that were all focused more on the digital side. And I know this, one of the things I've heard from a few citizens that I've talked to um is that there are. I don't know if a lot is the right word, but I know there is a number of people who really don't do social media. Maybe in some cases much internet at all. Um, so I don't know if we could just make sure that as we get into the weeds, we're also looking at what are ways that we can do engagement with people that are not, that are kind of outside that digital world as well, because not everyone connects through that.
That's great feedback. Thanks. I think we were so uh COVID Zoom world uh while writing these that. I forgot that eventually we can have in-person events. So um, we'll, we'll note that and, and certainly highlight press releases and, and other sorts of medium besides just online.
Oh, and then something, this is actually something my wife brought up that was a great idea, but um, I know we, Mahela is working on a newsletter. I'm so excited for that to start. Um, but when we put that out, we should put a banner up on the basketball court uh right outside on Cleveland. Because for people that aren't on our website or Facebook or whatever, they might not know that, oh, the town now has a newsletter that I could sign up for. So that would be a great way that we can hit all those people that may not be on our Facebook. They may not come to. Board meetings. They may not have any way to get that information, but we could get that out there to let them know, hey, by the way, you can sign up for this newsletter and get information on what's happening in the town.
That's a great idea. Thanks.
Why would we sign up for the newsletter, not just get it to them, John?
I generally, I don't, I mean, I don't know if the rules are different for us. I know most of the time, most people are not happy about receiving emails for things.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough, fair enough.
I don't know if there's different rules for us or not.
All right.
Anything else for community engagement?
Nope.
All right. Organizational strength. Provide regular training programs for all employees and develop cross-training plans. Update personnel policy. Review employee compensation and benefits. And create smooth, efficient employee onboarding and offboarding processes.
What, would you explain on and off boarding processes?
So for, when an employee starts with the organization, um, so in, ensuring that. Uh, the, the paperwork is easy to file. We, a lot of our paperwork processes are paper-based at this point. Um, so let me look at the, the dropdown for those in the Excel table here. Um, so yes, it says eliminate paper, um, time-consuming steps for onboarding and offboarding candidates. And the search tracking process. So um, we're a bit in the dark ages when somebody applies. Sometimes it's a hard copy type of. Um, application we receive. So we're just trying to modernize our current recruiting process that we have. And then once an employee is hired, try to create um or look into software options or just other ways to make it smooth and efficient.
Okay, okay. That's all I got. No, anyone else? Looks good.
It looks good. The only thing I'd like to maybe add into the training, and I don't know how this works, and again, this isn't in the weeds thing. Um, but is just making sure that as we're training town staff and town employees that we're. Communicating with them really that, you know, are, all of our jobs at the end of the day is the service to the citizens of the town. It doesn't matter if you're a trustee. It doesn't matter if you're town administrator. It doesn't matter if you're the person where you can have to leave. You know, your customers are the citizens of the town of Wellington. I know something was brought up to my attention last week where apparently somebody got. Yelled at by some member of town staff while they were doing something in the park with their kids. And I, I don't know what the situation was. I don't know what was going on, but it's just simple things like that, just to help. Make sure that everyone in the organization is really keeping that top of mind is, hey, when we're interacting with members of the public, these are our customers. These are our clients. These are the people that we exist to serve. And just make sure that's top of mind within the training.
All right, so. Anyone else got a comment? All right. So let me, let me, let me just, and I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it. I don't want to. Get on a sidetrack. I don't want to do that, but uh, these are the four topics of our. Of our strategic management plan here, right? There's nothing else. Is that correct?
This is what we talked about in the retreat. So if there was anything missing, um, I'm not aware, but that, that was the four key areas that we focused in on.
We got community engagement here. Do we need anything about? Am I missing it or is it inherent in this block about community entertainment?
We don't have that in there. So what, um, so like through economic development, entertainment or through recreation?
That, all the, yeah, all that kind of thing. You know, you're, that's, we want to make that enhance that, enhance community entertainment. I don't know. I, you know what I mean? I don't know. That's something to be thought about.
Well, maybe that's the direction we were trying to go with that cultural amenities piece, like how do we use words to try to capture that?
Right. Maybe we can circle back on some of that. I don't know, you know? Not tonight, but another time and think about that, you know? It's about providing entertainment and fun and family engagement, how, all that stuff, you know? I think we're missing some of that. That's all I want to throw.
So, almost like more community interaction amongst. You know, community members, I guess, would be a. you know, community members, I guess, would be a, something to say like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's something missing there. We've got, we've got our, we've got our management approach, but we're missing that. Citizen part.
And I don't know if this would be a Kelly question or somebody for finances does not need to be addressed now, but if somebody could, uh, maybe reach out and let the, at least myself, but maybe the rest of the board as well. I know one of the items in the revenues item, subject was adopting a lodging fee. So adding in a, a separate fee, it sounded like. And so just to get an explanation of what that is and why we'd be adding additional fees, I'm assuming onto businesses, um, here in town.
We don't have to go into it right now, but that would just be specifically only for the hotel. So that would be for visitors, a lodging fee, um, just for, um, visitors. But again, that's something that we can certainly circle back to.
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, let's think about that, that, you know, community, you know, that entertainment. Okay. Parks and rags, you know, that stuff, park stuff, you know, downtown stuff, all that stuff. We're kind of missing that in this whole thing. We don't want to lose focus of that. Uh, anyway, that's it. That's all I got. Anyway, all right, good. Nice.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so we're on to a, a fund balance presentation.
So I'm filling it up. Here we go. So can you guys, let's see here. Can you see my screen? Does not, here we go. So sorry.
Judy, do you go by Jude? Judy?
I've heard a couple.
Yes, any of the above.
Okay, all right. Just making sure I'm doing it right.
Jude?
Yes.
All right. I like that.
I'm trying to share my screen here and wonder if I may need to reopen my, I have it up, but you guys can't see it. So, I'm going to close it and reopen real briefly. Okay, I am not a Zoom expert, guys. How come I, I'm, I have my PowerPoint up? Any other directors out there have? Recommendations, why I can't?
Um, Judy, is it in your, it, it's just the one in the packet, right? How about I just share it?
There it is.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. We got slides. Excellent, excellent, excellent. So, and I've got it up too. So, okay, so I wanted to, um, briefly, um, come back. When I first came on board, it was a little concerning to me that your fund balance, um, policy maybe wasn't exactly where it wanted to, where maybe we should be at. So I wanted to start at the, um, beginning and say, um, maybe, I don't know what you have done prior to this, but fund balance, what is it? Um, so I just, I very basically, it's the difference between your total assets, your total liabilities in each fund. And it measures your net financial resources available to finance expenditures into future periods. And that future periods part is something I want to try to, um, hold and remember a little bit as we move through this. And the second part is, why do we have it? So governments that maintain adequate reserves are better positioned to deal with funding issues in bad times. And then I went ahead and added, or to be in a position to take advantage of an opportunity. Sometimes there will become, there's something will come up. Maybe it's a lot that becomes available or any opportunity. And because we have funds available, we may be in a position where we can, um, take advantage of that. So current policy. So your current policy as it exists right now says between, so you have your, uh, general fund and then your enterprise funds. So it's a little bit different for each of them, but it's between twenty-five and thirty-three percent of your revenues, plus two years of your debt service, plus your next year's capital improvements. And so as I look at this, I ask, why should we maybe revisit this? Well, it's always a good practice to go through and particularly during a budget cycle to reassess our risks. What, what is different? Where are we moving and how are we going to get there? So as we go into the next presentation, we have got some significant new debt, um, inside of the water department. So that will change things drastically for us. And then the big piece for me is I always want to make sure that the fund policy that you have fits your community. We're not Fort Collins. We don't want to be Fort Collins. Um, so it's, you always want to look and, you know, from where, if you're in another community, you have other places that may do same, things differently. But you always want to make sure what you have fits you. And then the next one, how much? And so there are, it, there's the National Advisory of Council on State and Local Budgeting. There's the GFOA, there's a CGFOA. Um, but if you look at their recommendations, they're not that much different. So GFOA for anybody that doesn't remember is Government Finance or Finance Officers Association. And so they make a recommendation that at a min, a minimum, every general purpose government, regardless of size, maintain unrestricted budgetary fund balances in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund, operating revenues or general fund operating expenditures. And the choice of revenues or expenditures as a basis of comparison may be dictated by what is more predictable in a government's particular circumstance. And so the takeaway on there is I put down below is predictable and for me, what is controllable? And so COVID has been an excellent, excellent example of what you guys have had. Um, I, as we move through this, my recommendation will be to move away from revenues and tie our fund balance to an expenditure. And the reason that I feel that's important is we have, during COVID, you guys could control the things that we did or we didn't do. Um, you, there's a lot of things that are out there that are outside of our control. Um, and so you want to pick the thing that you can, you know, have some control over as you move through the, as the year. And then the next, uh, slide is you start asking yourself, what is the appropriate level of fund balance factors? Um, there's, there's probably about twenty of them on the list. We're not a school. We're not a special district. So you need to go and think of things, what, what is, um, important to us? So the size of the municipality and then where are we at? So Wellington is definitely growing. On the volatility of the revenues and expenditures. And I think one of the things here that's interesting is, um, other finance directors, as I have visited with them and read some of the reports that they have out there. Is their sales tax has really taken a hit. Well, ours has not. And I think that's because our sales tax is not a lot of discretionary. We are not focused on a mall. People aren't going to Kohl's and buying their kids' school clothes. Uh, we, our sales tax is still coming through. We have food for home consumption and some of our other things. And then definitely the expenditure side of that. We have some aging infrastructure and in a little bit, we're going to talk about our water plant. Um, and then you also want to make sure that what you're, when you're thinking these things through. And I suspect this might be when you, um, went and adopted your prior, uh, fund balance policy, the one that we have right now. Is when you go through a rating, um, for S and P or Moody's, they're brutal ratings, but they will, um, look at your fund balance. And they will also look at the policy, whether you followed it, and they'll go back about five to 10 years. And so it is really important that you have one and when you get where you want to be, that you follow it. And then the other one is the availability of resources and other funds. And so as we move in and we talk about the water fund and the general fund both back and forth. It is a completely acceptable practice if we needed to at some point in time dip into fund balance that you could borrow from one of the other funds. And then, um, I think we, we spoke about this a little bit earlier, um, the stable service delivery. These are the reason we all have jobs. It's our constituents. These, this is every citizen out there. It's everything that we do. And if something changes, we want to be sure that we are able to provide stable service delivery. And then the next, uh, as we move through, so when is it appropriate to use your fund balance? Um, certainly in the case of an emergency, um, if you had an economic downturn. Sometimes if you have a policy and then you're going to do a capital purchases and it's, um, you know that you're going to have funds that are going to be coming back in a short period of time. Um, and then definitely one-time expenditures. Those could be, you know, uh, the number one, uh, we talked about was emergencies, but it can also be an unforeseen opportunity, a building becomes available. You have a park that's contiguous to a trail, something that's there and you want to take advantage of it. And then next slide, we'll go into, um, replenishing of the funds. And this is when if you go through a Moody's or a, um, S and P, rating, this is the part that they will look and kind of really dig in to make sure that you've done this. Um, so if you have, you go in there, you define the conditions that it would warrant, would, when we would ever use it. And if we fall below, this is the part that they want to know, what are you going to do to make it right? So we define the time period, um, you know, and it would be based on why, why did we dip into fund balance? Um, describe how the government's expenditures or revenues fell, and then how are we going to adjust those? And if there was, are we bridging a, a gap? And that might be a little bit of our discussion as we move into the water fund. And then the time period, um, and so they have some pretty strict, um, um, guidelines of what that is. And so can you go to the next one, replenishing strategies? Thank you. Um, so generally the governments, um, we should seek to have the, those funds replaced in one to three years. And I think more importantly than just identifying, is it one to three years? We need to go through and be very specific where the funds are going to come from. And so one of the, and I'm not going to, uh, go through every single item, um, but if you're recovering from an event, um, any like long-term planning, if you said, we're going to do this and we know that we're going to be below it for two years, but we're going to get there the third year. There's diff, different situations that come up. And I think identifying those sources that you're going to do them. And if, you know, if it's legally possible, you can take money from another fund. You may, you need to make sure that it's defense, defensible. But if it is appropriate, that is certainly one of the strategies. And then, um, certainly if you have excess resources at the end of the year, that's the biggest and the most popular reason why people would do that. They'll say, well, certainly we know sales tax will be better, or, you know, the plant will go online or we're going to play, pay off a loan, something along those lines. And so the next slide, pretty please, thank you. Um, so the recommended policy, what I would say is keep it very simple. Not stacking multiple items on top of each other. So I would say three to four months of operating expenditures. And again, I would tie it to expenditures rather than revenues because this is something we can control. I would lean towards the three or four months, um, even though that's probably a little bit more than the, the base rate because we are in a position where we're growing. Or a hundred and ten percent. This is our debt service. This was the requirement inside of the loan that you just got. And so if you have a loan covenant, and I would say whichever one of those is larger. And then when we move through the water, uh, fund, the, the plant expansion, we'll talk about that a little bit again. Um, and it'll be interesting to, I'll show you where we came out when we adjusted those. And then the next, um, one, so the next, um, steps I would like to do is, um, get some feedback from, uh, the trustees and mayor, if you would, anybody want to weigh in, if this is something you like. What your comfort level is, and then bring back a fund balance policy that is not stacking, um, debt on top of the, the, I, I would like to keep it very simple. I don't think that we should be stacking, uh, capital improvement on top of debt. Um, and again, I would like to see us tie it to expenditures rather than revenues. Um, and I would bring that back, um, when we adopt the, the budget.
Well, real quick, before I give it to everybody, I like the fact that going to expenditures, those are more, I would more call them fixed costs than, you know, uh, I don't know, I know they may not be fixed, but those are known costs that you can count on versus your revenues that might go up and down. I'm very pleased that we didn't take a hit like most other municipalities did with the sales tax. But I like the idea of getting some flexibility here and doing some thinking, uh, uh, and using some, because we do have some other funds and policies or, or other funds and, uh, revenues here that are doing pretty well versus other ones that we can use and tap into versus being afraid or have a policy in place to let us do that. Now, I'm in favor of exploring any of that. So board members.
I like the adjustments. I think it looks good in terms of changing at the fund balance policy, and I think it would also give us some more flexibility. I would personally prefer that we try to stay away from transferring funds between, I understand that it's acceptable and thing that can do, um, I just from conversations I've had with members of the community. It doesn't look the best when we do things. So my preference would be as much as possible to stay away from that because I don't want to be robbing Peter to pay Paul.
I absolutely agree. If we ever, um, got into a position that was a very short period for, I would say, um, less than a year, if it was six months that we were trying to make a loan payment, um, you can do a due-to, due-from and do a rate stabilization. Um, and you actually book it where it's very obvious on both whatever fund that you're taking it from. And, um, then you show where it's going back into that, so that when you do the next budget cycle, it's very, very obvious where those funds need to go.
This is, um, I remember when we made this change to the fund balance policy, and I really like the suggestions that you've made based on the, uh, GFOA recommendations, um, and standards that they've set. So thank you so much for diving into this and taking a look at it because taking a look at the information that you've presented this evening, it looks like we were, maybe we, we were a little further off base than we should have been regarding our, our fund policy. So I really liked the information that you have presented this evening. Um, I think it's in alignment with, um, government finance standards and, um, I appreciate the time and effort that you put into the presentation. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Thumbs up from Rebecca.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think especially, uh, I'm, I'm, think it's a really good idea that we're reviewing this again, instead of it being set in stone. I think having a new set of eyes on this is a great idea. And obviously having these policies does help us with our, our credit rating. I'm aware of that. Cause I think it's like triple A or something. So, but I think relooking at them and, you know, if there's a better way of doing it, I'm, again, this is kind of getting into the weeds a little bit, but I, I would concur that looking at this again with a different set of eyes is, is a good idea, especially with some of the debt for the water treatment plant coming on, it may be a very reasonable thing to do. So thank you very much.
So does there anything that you, um, disliked that if we, if I take these and put them into a policy, and bring them back with a budget that would, that you would like to see changed? I'm not getting head nods. Okay.
Let's go. Yeah, that's it.
So Kelly, do you mind, um, since it's working and I, I, I suspect I could get mine back up, but we'll just go with the water plant expansion. So, um, the, this first slide, so twenty twenty-four is highlighted and you'll keep seeing it highlighted, um, because that's where we're trying to get to. So I'm going to start with, um, and thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to Bob and Cody, because we have gone back and forth on this, um, to make sure that we had something that we thought, um, would work for everyone. So, um, as we move through this, if, um, anybody, 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 Bob, Cody, if you guys have anything to offer up or change, uh, stop me. So we'll move through. Um, where are we today and how do we bridge the time period until twenty twenty-four? That's when we are scheduled to get that plant up. So currently we have four thousand one hundred and three residential users. We have a hundred and forty-six commercial users. Where, um, estimated, uh, date for our plant to come online or to be operational is spring of twenty twenty-four. And our existing plant, um, and Bob, help me out. It is, for what we're rated, we are approaching the capacity on that. So I'm using an eighty percent capacity. Um, so I can use that in my calculations. Our tap fee is at currently fifty-five hundred dollars. We're estimating that our total future population would, um, arrive at thirty-five thousand eventually. Uh, current population is at about eleven thousand two fifty. So, uh, phase one of the plant will increase capacity to accommodate about half of this, uh, of the differential there. So the population by that standards would be somewhere between twenty-three thousand and twenty-four thousand before we would need to do phase two of the plant that we had talked about previously.
And so what we're trying to do is, or what I'm trying to do is tie this back to uh Kelly's presentation that we have inside of our strategic plan, which is our intentional growth and our sustainable infrastructure. Um, as we move through that, this sustainable infrastructure, you'll see where um, on the next slide, it becomes very important that we think about that ahead of time. And so the plant uh construction costs right now are at about twenty-three point three. Jacobs, we're think is going to come in at about uh three point three four. Um, and your loan is for twenty-four. So that leaves us with a shortfall of two point six four million dollars. And that's just as we keep moving through, well, we may need to come back to that, but that's what we're trying to get to. So this next slide is your, your debt service that is existing. And so this is um having some forward thinking, what we'll try to avoid in the future. We have what I call stacking of debt. We have nineteen eighty-two, we have nineteen eighty-four and two thousand and one. And even though those will phase out, they are definitely a little bit more of the burden that we're trying to figure out on top of the two thousand and nineteen um loan that we have just taken out. And so as I went through, um, when they did your model for you, they didn't have completely accurate information on there. We may look at paying off um the twenty-two, twenty-three, there could potentially be a little bit of savings there. But the, you just remember the principal's always got to be paid. So the only fun money that we would save would be some of that interest. So that's not something that I've completely put away. But we also need to investigate and see if there's any prepayment penalties or if there's any fees for um them to come up and do if, if we go, if we want to pay that off early. So we'd have to weigh that against any savings. Next slide, pretty please. So what we're trying to do is achieve our balance here. We have our existing users and then we have the future users that are coming on. And we need to recognize that the existing debt prior to the expansion is some of what we have right now is the, is the gap. And we have not increased our tap fees or our rates in many years. And so we have a deficit. Um, and the debt service plans, again, I'm looking at the short term, which is getting us to twenty twenty-four. And then the long term, once that plant becomes operational, um, the number of permits that Cody could uh issue and the subdivisions, they would take care of funding the debt. And so the key that I think here is the existing debt, so the note that we took out in two thousand and nineteen, we desperately need to make sure that that is paid off when you're when we hit somewhere between that twenty-three thousand and twenty-four thousand. So that whomever, if, when that time comes, they are not looking at this loan that we have now and stacking phase two on top of that. So the components that we have that we can adjust are tap fees. Um, and then any kind of rate increases. And then the new years, new users that we can bring on at one time, that's the intentional growth piece. And we need to balance that with what the plant can handle between now and when that plant goes on board. And then as we use this, um, the school just put out, uh, they spent quite a bit of money doing a survey. So I originally figured two point eight people and then we had three point three people. But just to be consistent with the numbers you're seeing, um, coming through other uh surveys right now, we're going to use three point two people. And you just keep monitoring it to make sure uh when, when we're going to be approaching the twenty-three thousand people. Next slide, pretty please. So this is a conceptual plan. Um, Cody and Bob and I, we have worked back and forth, back and forth. Um, and we'll take some feedback, but this is what we know. The plant capacity right now will allow for about a hundred homes during construction. So that number is really three hundred and it could be one twenty, eighty hours. So I'm just using um one hundred straight across for each year. And if we bumped our um tap fee to seventy-five hundred times the one hundred homes, that gives us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Your loan next year is one point six million dollars. And that's the, the debt service on all four of those existing loans. And then again, recognizing that the nineteen eighty-two, eighty-four and two thousand and one notes pay off over time and that the tap fees um would increase. So the current users with, if again, we're just, this is a conceptual plan that we can, you know, adjust the numbers. But we have it right now that fifty-five percent of the debt would be carried during the construction period by the current users and the new users. So those are your tap fees would carry about forty-five percent of your debt. And when I first ran these, I was at about sixty-five percent or a little over sixty-five percent. And Cody cautioned me to try to bring that down. And so that's where we're at the fifty-five percent. But in order to do that, um, I first was looking at doing a seven thousand dollar tap fee. So um again, these are the things that we can adjust. And I just, I'm wanting to um get the concept out there and then we can talk about it a little bit. Um, and the reason we have this gap and why it exists is neither the rates or the tap fees have been adjusted. I think it's in more than ten years. And so we haven't funded any depreciation or any of the capital needs that we have moving forward. And so as we look at this, in twenty twenty-four is where we're trying to get to. Those other notes would be paid off, we would be down to a single note. Um, if we increased the tap fees uh by two hundred dollars a year. And again, Cody, when I was visiting with him, we felt that it was important if that number's two hundred or a hundred and fifty, a hundred, whatever that number is, if we can share that it with people as they are coming into the planning department, then they can use that. So this um bottom number is just to demonstrate to you how we would get there in twenty twenty-four. And it would take the burden off the current users. So if the tap fee was up to eighty-one hundred dollars, um, and it's just simple math, you divide that into the debt service. We would need a hundred and eighty-one homes to completely fund that debt without anything um coming from the current users. Next slide. So again, how do we get there? So this would be increasing your tap fees to seventy-five hundred dollars in the water fund. Your sewer fund is currently at seventy-five hundred. And that's, uh, we'll talk about um at a future meeting. But they don't, we, because those rates were at seventy-five hundred, they don't have quite the, the same uh deficit is the water fund. Program two hundred dollar annual increases. Um, the hundred houses or hundred uh permits until with the plant goes online. And what I would like to see us do is list this separately on the water bill. And the number that we're using is about seventeen dollars for a capital improvement fee. The good news that we got today, I'm not, I'm hoping everybody read their emails with that water, with a Pooter water rate came in. We are about six hundred thousand dollars better off than we started the day with. So uh we were doing happy dances in finance today. Um, so this total of seventy-five do- uh dollars. I think when Tyler brings back capital improvement next Tuesday to you, I think we're going to be looking at more like the sixty-six dollar range. And what I think is important here is I would, this would be on their bill for just the three years. When those, when the plant comes online, that base rate. Um, so right, why I would like to um keep the base rate separate from the capital improvement fee is so that uh folks understand that they're funding the plant expansion. And that yeah, and so right now, um, so the slide in front of you is seventy-five dollars. But I think tweaking, uh, we had a large capital project that we talked to Bob. We think we've got that moved down a year. And then the good news that we got today from the North Pooter uh water shares and our, our bill for the raw water. Um, I think again, I, I would be thrilled if we could get this total down to sixty-seven or sixty-six dollars. And so again, the tap fees would be paying about forty-five percent the following year, about fifty percent. The next year, about fifty-five percent. Your existing users would be at about fifty-five percent, then they would go down to fifty percent and about forty-five percent. And then twenty twenty-four, they would not be carrying the debt at all. Next slide. So what I would be proposing is that um we go in and adjust the fund balance as we had discussed in the previous, previous presentation. And the thing that's really interesting, when you find the right answer for where your fund balance should be, this one is thirty-three percent of your operating expenditures, we're at about one point six million dollars or your loan covenant. And it's at about one point six million dollars. That's how you know you found your sweet spot. And so when you go through these different scenarios and you keep exploring, should it be twenty-five percent? Should it be thirty-three percent? Depending on what's going on in your community, are you growing? Do you have infrastructure? It's always really nice when you get those numbers that close together, it tells us we found the right spot. So again, this seventeen dollar capital fee would be on their bill for three years. Then it needs, it would go away or with, we decided, you know, we'll keep monitoring it. It would drop significantly, maybe we'll keep a couple dollars on there because we want to make sure that we're funding. Um, and we're not seeing the hundred and eighty-one homes come on board. Maybe you're going to tell me you don't want to save the seventy-five hundred or we're going to grow at a slower rate. But this is what we, we were trying to figure out how to get as close to that seventy um total rate on their water bill. Um, from when I first joined the Wellington team, that was the first presentation Tyler did. And the seventy seemed to be the magic and we were trying desperately to stay as close to that as we could. Next slide. So overall, um, if we do, your projected year end for twenty twenty-one, we would have five point four. Um, we need to keep fund balance of one point six and that would leave us about three point eight. Um, and that would carry us over until that plant came on board. Um, the fund, the shortfall that we talked about in the very first slide of the two point six four million dollars, I would recommend that we um fund it from our existing fund balance. And I, again, I think it's absolutely imperative that we recognize. Dave and Bob keep cautioning me that we are preliminary um on this, on this plant. So these are the best numbers that we have today. And so I think it's really important that we monitor them and we monitor them when we monitor them. We cannot ever afford to go ten years without talking about it. And so whether we visit with you guys mid-year, if we think something significant is coming up or if it can wait and it's just visited annually when you're doing your budgeting. But it should be addressed at a very minimum, at least annually. Next slide. And so I will leave that with um what, what's, what's our feedback? What do we think um on the water bill? Do you guys like the idea of showing the plant separate?
I do. All the people want to know what that expense has been paid for and they don't know that. That's my personal opinion. And you call it capital improvement, I like to see it say water plant expansion itself, but
Cassell is a, a nice software, we can put plant expansion right on there. And it also um helps them understand that um when we're asking for some conservation.
Yeah, it tells them that we're working on the expansion of our waters so we can get it to you, it won't be, you won't be shorted in the summertime. It also tells you, we're going to improve your water quality, that's what we're working on, that's what you're paying for. That's all I got to say, uh, board members, please. Anyone?
I did have a couple of questions. So first, I want to make sure that I'm understanding properly. Because I know when we initially were going through all the rate changes and everything like that, we were looking at the thirty-five um dollar rate change in October that's already happened. And then the seventy dollar, some seventy-something dollar change that was going to happen January one. And that was to keep us at fund balance and that covered, and that included covering the cost of the existing um loan payments on the water plant. And if I understand correctly, you're just saying it isn't a change, it is slightly higher. But this isn't necessarily a change to that plan, it's just you're specifying what portion of that is going specifically towards funding the water plant, is that correct?
Correct, and the reason I, I just, I feel that it is more transparent when folks ask, you know, what are we doing? Um, and then I like the idea that if we plan well and we get in front of this, that not only do we have a long-term strategy for funding that debt, but that rate could technically go down. And that feels, you know, if that rate, if we took that, if say we land at sixty-seven dollars next week, which I think is where we're going to be at. Um, and we take that seventeen dollars off, they're at fifty dollars and that's the base rate. And again, you know, in three years, maybe that's really a fifty-two or a fifty-five. But that is a lot more palatable when you're trying to, you know, you've got kids at home and you're trying to do all of these other things than have seventy dollars and that's just how it's going to be and we're going to add on top of that.
Okay, so my only concern, I really like the idea and I appreciate the transparency. I think you and I have had this conversation before, it's big for me, so I really appreciate your uh bringing that up. I think that what I don't like is the, I, I like the idea of, okay, in three years, twenty twenty-four, that goes away. Um, what I don't like is, well, maybe we keep a couple of dollars, because then it comes across as you're not actually short-terming it, you're just putting it there whenever it's convenient. I would rather it's there, it gets pulled off. If we have to add something back on, it's a very clear, specific, we're putting something else back in versus just leaving it in there. I know that's one of the concerns several people have brought to me over the last few weeks is they're frustrated that, you know, I, you know, the, basically the comment goes, I've lived here in Wellington for fifteen to twenty years. I'm not the one who built a new house and built all this and acquired all this infrastructure. Why am I being the one who has to pay for all these new homes to come in, right? The water plant was fine when I lived here twenty years ago, but now we have, you know, tens of thousands of people. And I'm having to pay for these water plant upgrades that I didn't contribute to the problem, right? And so I would like to make, one, I would actually prefer to have a seat, more of that burden fall on the newer homes. I prefer to see that flipped to where more percentage of it's falling on the new construction than on the existing users. Because again, the existing users were here, um, the new development is coming in. If we, I don't know if we can do that, but that would be my preference was to flip it instead of having it the fifty-five, forty-five the other way. Um, but two, is it be very clear that with this, it falls off in three years, four years, whatever. If we, the board at that time needs to re-address putting something back on there, then that's a separate conversation that's had. And it's a separate decision that's made, it's, we, that there's no ongoing, we just tweak it and adjust it as needed.
Okay, and I, I appreciate that. The um, if, depending on if we didn't meet the permits, we may need to, again, and, but we can absolutely go in there and it would depend on what your um rates are. And so if you wanted that flipped, what would your comfort level be with taking our tap fees? Where, because I only have so many things I can adjust.
I, I mean, this is where I don't, I don't know all the intricacies of things like that. But I would say, you know, we're at a crunch time here. I would be happy, I would be fine with putting the tap fees up to eight, nine thousand dollars or more if we need to. Um, because it is the new development that is requiring this new plant. So I really think that we should have the burden of the infrastructure for that plant. I'm not saying that we have to put a hundred percent up. I know there are people that would say a hundred percent of that should fall, we're all using the plant, so I, I get that. But I would, I would be fine with setting the tap fees up higher if we need to to really have the new construction carry a larger weight of that cost.
So and following the philosophy, if we had done small rate increases um and raised those, you know, so the last thousand homes that have come on board, if they had paid an additional tap fee, so those are some of our users. And I have that conversation as well with people. And it's like, well, I built five years ago, um, but they got in under a tap fee that was probably a little bit less than it should have been. So um Cody, weigh in if you could, pretty please, do you, what do you think we could? I, I don't know.
Check something really quick, this is Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. Um, this might be a good, a good time to remember why we're doing this plan. There were three primary goals of the plan. One was to increase capacity for future growth. One was to improve the water quality, the palatability and especially taste and odor. And one was to get the plant back in compliance. We had been failing our whole effluent toxicity test for years. And um this plant was required, this is, this expansion and these addition, this new processes are rebuilding were required to continue to operate this water plant. So clearly there's um kind of varying amounts of benefit to both constituents. Both constituents here, future constituents and existing customers.
Bob, just to clarify, to, to make it very blunt. If not one single new house had been built in the town of Wellington. This plant would still have to have something done to it, correct? Because it doesn't, it doesn't meet compliance, the, the EPA or the, whoever the governing body is. Is telling us that this does not meet our requirements, you gotta change it. So regardless if we build ten thousand houses or zero houses, this plant is obsolete and has to be replaced no matter what.
Yes, that's, that's true. We have a liquid discharge that discharges to the environment. That was not meeting EPA and state standards. And it is necessary for us to make some big changes in order to keep our plant running, even at its current capacity.
No, and I. Just a little follow-up. If we chose not to do anything, what is the consequence? They just come in and say you have no more water to the town of Wellington?
We could make, you know, a smaller package of changes to, to the plant to meet that goal.
Well, no, no, just, I mean, if, if zero was done to do anything about fixing or replacing the plant. The alternative is no water for the town of Wellington, period, correct?
That's generally true. As, as you guys might recall, we were under a compliance order on consent, we had to pay a fine. And one of the stipulations as part of the settlement of that compliance order was that we were going to embark on a new water plant project.
I just want to make it, I mean, because I, I get the whole, you know, this, this dynamic between. Older, you know, residents that have been here for several years and the new residents, I, I understand those dynamics, but. There is a bottom line here that even if there wasn't a single home built in the last five years in this town. They were, the, the responsibility would be on the, the folks that were here five years ago. To pay for the fixing of this plant, or, you know, a new construction, so. I just wanted to kind of make that and bring that out and look at it in a different fashion, because I know that's a big, you know. Talking point, and it's a big concern of a lot of people is, you know, well, it's not our fault that, you know, we've got so many more people that we need a new water plant. Well, yeah, you need a new water plant, you know, regardless, because it, it no longer meets any of the EPA specifications. And you're required to, to replace it with something that does, so. I just want to kind of put that in a different perspective, because that's not been talked about. Much, or at, at all, the fact that, you know, this plant has to be replaced regardless of its capacity problems or not.
Think this is Trustee Whitehouse. I think that's a really good point, Trustee Jerome. Circling back to tap fees and the balance of the debt and who carries that, I mean. What is realistic? Obviously, we've raised the, well, cash and loop policy considerably to get to market. Which is appropriate. But what is a, what's reasonable for, from a standpoint of the developers? I mean, again, if these rates are too low. And I don't know when the last time they were raised, but you know, what is sort of the feedback from developers? I'm guessing any increase is not going to be appreciated, but that may not be a realistic perspective. So I'm just kind of curious about those two, those two points.
Cody, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, certainly. This is Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Appreciate the opportunity here tonight, and I appreciate all the comments that have been said. I think you guys are really getting a good handle on this. To the question about the tap fees, as Mr. Whitehouse alluded. We did just have, have a pretty dramatic increase to the raw water contribution, the cash and loop policy. We're seeing a lot of our developers are, are changing their mindset, moving to, they want to provide the shares because it makes more sense for them. So they're, they're seeing some balance in there, which is what we wanted, that's good. The tap fee is not optional. That's a, they have to pay that additional cash upfront. With a building permit, so there's no alternative arrangement they can make to reduce that price. From my perspective in the development community. What, any, as Mr. Whitehouse alluded, any increase is going to be met with opposition. So I think that the town and the board just needs to be really firm in our resolve on, on defending what that increase is going to be. But I would say that on behalf of the developers, one of the biggest challenges that we fight at a staff level. Is developers are, are making financial commitments to their projects. And they've based their, their metrics off of pro forma with the fees the town has established. And when we make one-time dramatic changes to those fees, that's really hard for them to absorb. And so, you know, make their profit and pay their, their subcontractors, et cetera, et cetera. The biggest advantage I think we can give to the development community is to provide something predictable. When I talked with, with Judy, my suggestion was. We need to start programming those increases at an appropriate level for the next several years and tell developers. We're planning this. These increases are gonna happen on an annual basis. To meet the needs of this expansion project and the needs of the town. And if they can start programming those increases into their pro forma, it's less of a surprise. A five-hundred-dollar increase is not a big thing to absorb on a half-a-million-dollar house. But when you start creeping into the thousands of dollars that are unexpected, that becomes a little more difficult. So Judy's example that she shared tonight included that incremental increase on an annual basis. And I think that if we can share those numbers with the developers in advance, so they can prepare for it and plan for it accordingly, we're gonna have a lot more success in this endeavor.
I think that's a, I think that's a very good point. So if we were gonna do this in an incremental manner. Starting, I mean, what is the necessity to go from, I guess, what is the speed in which? We're envisioning doing this. You mentioned five hundred dollars a year, but is that, does that, does that work on the financial side?
Two hundred was where we, when we, if we start at seventy-five-hundred. And Cody and I, we've run more models than you want to see, trust me. So if we start, it, we had looked at seven thousand and then done, you know, and then increased it by the five hundred. But then we did the seventy-five-hundred, increasing it by the two hundred, and that seemed to be. Kind of where the magic happened was, it was a little bit more, for Cody, over the five years, that was a thousand dollars. And then the seventy-five-hundred, if that's where the, the wastewater is already at. It doesn't seem like it would be that big of a surprise. You pull your permit and the taps are the same. But again, it's, we can run this. Again, Cody and I probably both have ten different scenarios. And the seventy-five-hundred one with the two hundred dollars was kind of as low. I mean, you can get there other ways. It just, if, if originally I had it backwards. And Cody cautioned me to exactly what we talked about a little bit earlier, is I had the, the current users at about sixty-five percent. And Cody says, oh, they're not gonna like that. If you can get that down a little bit. So that's when we tweaked it up to seventy-five-hundred. And then made, and brought down the two hundred dollar incremental use, instead of just giving them five hundred dollars, boom, all at once.
Is it possible to at least get us to where it's a fifty-fifty? Because I, I understand that we need to make the adjustments, but. I still, I, I understand we need to be cognizant of the developers. But at the same time, we also have to remember that we have to be cognizant of our citizens as well. We shouldn't be making decisions that are in the best interest of the, of the developers at the expense of the citizens. So can we just get it to where it's at least fifty-fifty to start with? And then maybe we gradually work it to where the new development is taking on more of that. Because right now, we're basically saying, we're gonna, we, we want to be thoughtful developers. So we're gonna put a greater cost on the existing citizens. To me, that seems pretty backwards.
Well, and I think we would be there without, where we're at right now. The, the giddy up and the differential on there was that existing loan, which really are the current users. The nineteen-eighty-two, the nineteen-eighty-four, and the two thousand and one. That's the differential between your one point four, which is where we're gonna get in two thousand and twenty-four. And the one point six that we have to be responsible for next year. So I can certainly run those numbers and email them to you, but that's why they're probably at about a fifty-five percent when we were shooting for half and half.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
May I make a request for when we view that, if you, or even the data as is in these scenarios? I'm accustomed to seeing the rates versus the fund balance and everything in a specific table that we utilize with the model from the water rate study. And just because that visually speaks to me, I'm wondering if it's possible to display these numbers in a similar format. I realize the existing model is not applicable to what we're talking about this, but. But I think it would be great for me to, to make that connection and understanding. It would be super helpful for me.
Anyone else?
I did actually have another question. Go ahead, Trustee McDonald. Oh, oh, wait.
Thank you, Trustee Gator. Mr. Byrd, can you, do you know about what the projected number of rooftops is? Over the next four or five years residential? Like the, that's already currently approved and annexed in, like shovel-ready projects that we, we can expect?
Yeah, and great question, Trustee McDonald. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me right now. I could pull them up pretty quickly. But we've, I can tell you, as I, as I mentioned in a previous board meeting, we currently only have a hundred and thirty-five buildable lots, meaning permit ready. The last I checked, we had close to a thousand lots that were annexed and zoned and platted. But not having infrastructure. On, currently, over the last couple of years, we've been issuing around two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy building permits. For single-family units, whether they were attached to townhomes or single-family detached units. About two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy units per year. You, you've probably already picked up on what was probably subtly presented in this, this PowerPoint presentation. But what we're actually looking at. For the next three to four years until the treatment plant's expansion is online. Is we're at a pretty critical capacity, of a treatment capacity issue. That we're actually proposing reducing that number from around two hundred and fifty to just a hundred. So that's gonna put a pretty big strain on our development community. And it's not gonna be probably an easy conversation for, for staff and board members to have when developers. Are kind of dealt this information. So we've really, as a staff, worked really hard to kind of make sure that we're trying to hit this sweet spot with these different converging trend lines. To make sure that we can do this responsibly and within budget and still provide. Continued modest growth of the community to attract those commercial businesses that are so dearly coveted. I think that was a, a long-winded explanation, and maybe I missed the, the question completely, but I'd be happy to clarify anything further.
Um, I think at one time, maybe you'd provided like a five-year scope of just kind of what those projections look like, maybe just as a supplement. If you have time, if it's something the rest of the board is interested in seeing, I think it might be helpful, but. Really, Cody, I don't want you to, to create any unnecessary work for yourself at this time. I guess my follow-up to that would be, in a doom and gloom situation, worst-case scenario. Not because we, we raised the tap fees, but because we had an economic collapse because of circumstances. And the development stops or slows to where it's less than, you know, that hundred homes being developed a year. What, what are we, what is the plan? Is that just, are we going to increase that amount for our? Our rate users, or are we going to maintain the level that we're presenting today? Does that make sense?
Yes, if you go back to the first, the fund balance presentation that we went through. That's why you have those fund balances. And so say we did something. I mean, we've had a crazy election. We don't know, right? I mean, something could happen. Whoever heard of nine eleven? I mean, these things happen in our lifetime. And so you have to, that's, that was that critical point on there. It allows you time to adjust. And so that would allow us time. We go, we evaluate what's in the general fund. What's in our raw water fees? What do we have? But that's why you want to make sure that that fund balance will cover your debt service, that's at least a year. And then it gives you time to put together a strategy of what are we gonna do? Is this a long time? I mean, is it long-term? Is it last longer than a year? And especially with your drinking water, it's such a critical, critical piece of, you know, your entire. Community.
Well, thank you, Judy. I appreciate the clarification. It sounds like the staff has, you know, a backup in mind. And I appreciate the clarification on what those fund balancer reserves are, are intended for. And it sounds like that's kind of the backup plan, so instead if commercial development fails or any further residential development fails. Instead of increasing that amount on our, our fees or his water bills. We would maintain that whatever rate it is that we set and just depend on our reserves or fund balance to supplement that until the economy comes back. Is, is my perception correct on what you're conveying?
Correct, as long, I mean, and that would give you about a year's time to evaluate that. If it was something that you're looking at and we're not gonna see any development for three years. Then again, we have to come up with a strategy for rates. How are we gonna get our debt service paid? And, you know, and that's where we went back to that big piece, and we want to make sure that we're doing our service to our constituents. That they're not seeing these great big huge increases. And so if we had to do something and say our, we knew it was gonna be three years. You know, before something was gonna do a correction. Then we come up with a strategy where we could balance some of the fund balance. And then maybe very small increases so that people can manage. When we see these large increases, that's where we hear the moms and dads, and they're like, geez. I'm, you know, I'm trying to get the kids doing this and that, and then suddenly we have these large increases. And then the question I hear is, should I expect another large increase next year? And so our answer is no, we're working towards getting some stabilization in the plan.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I had a question, because I know the number that was put in there as far as the development was that the plant can handle basically that one hundred. Per year, and I just wanted to see how we arrived at that number, because, I mean, the. What we were hearing this summer was, we are gonna have to turn off water to the water dispenser. We're not, we're gonna hit capacity, we're running out. So I'm trying to understand here, how now we're gonna be able to, what are we gonna be changing that will support this additional construction? That we're not repeating in a worse station where we were at this last summer?
There's several kind of paths forward there that we're working on right now. One of the primary ones is the microfiltration unit. We did not turn that on this past summer, and as we've discussed in the past. The, the microfiltration process does provide a substantial amount of water. But it doesn't treat for taste and odor very well. So we have, basically, that's our emergency plan. That's, that's the, the last part of the emergency plan is to turn on the MF. If we've got to keep, you know, our pipes dry and keep water flowing to our customers. We're also kind of pulling out the stops on a water conservation program. You'll see some more about that in the five-year CIP. But you also saw in the strategic plan that the public education part of the water conservation program. Is a top priority for us. We really want to be ready. Come springtime, that people are more educated about what they can do to conserve water and reduce their, their water expenses as well. So there's, there's things that we can do. We, we can't really, that hundred unit residential permit. Number is, it's, it's not a very scientific number, right? We're going through, through this by feel in a lot of ways. And frankly, the biggest wild card is COVID. If COVID is still around in next May. Then we may have to readjust, and it's like Jude was saying earlier, relative to the. The financial sustainability elements of this, we have to monitor, monitor, monitor and adjust continuously as we go. So we're hoping that COVID is, is done, that the vaccinations are effective, and then people are back to work. But we're not necessarily planning on that, right? So we need to plan for the worst, and the worst case is that our conservation efforts, which we will be undertaking in a major way. For next summer, the restrictions, all those things will be coming back our way. Don't work, or can kind of continue to don't work, not work. They weren't especially effective this past summer. We really need to make those more effective. And as a kind of emergency measure, we can flip. Need to make those more effective, and uh as a kind of emergency measure, we can flip on the micro filtration unit. And provide enough water to get us through, we believe, the next three years.
Okay, that, I mean, the, it's good to hear the concern that I have, and this is what was brought to me by several citizens, is that. You know, we're being quote-unquote punished um with these water restrictions, you know, my yard has to die, or I can't do this, or whatever. Um, because we don't have enough water, yet you as the town are still going out and building more houses. But you're telling me you can't support my house. So i- it's a little difficult, because we're kind of giving two messages. And one message, we're saying, there's not enough water, you can't water your yard, we're gonna find you. Because how do you make that more effective? Really, the only way to make it more effective is we start actually charging them the fines and things like that. Um, so we're now punishing them. Um, yet at the same time, so we're punishing them with one hand, and on the other hand, we're building additional houses. That are gonna, whether they're on non-pot systems or not, they're still using a portion of water. And so it's kind of giving a mixed message. If we're gonna be saying water restrictions on one hand and building, yet we're building additional homes on the other hand, we're, we're communicating two very different messages at the same time. Which is a little concerning.
Well, I'd like to make a comment. I mean, I think that. I don't believe the water restrictions are ever going away after this plant gets in, at least in my mind, because. Water is a resource that they're not making any more of it, and I think we gotta realize that growing Kentucky bluegrass or whatever this stuff is. Doesn't make any sense anymore, and what people thought was the way it was gonna be, I'm not sure. I think the educational component is part of it, but. We get fourteen to sixteen inches of precip a year here, and we're behind that already. I mean, this is not. You know, if we have more treatment capacity, that's one thing, but I don't think we're gonna be pouring it on the lawns. That's, that's really my view, and I could be very wrong about that. I mean, look at our yard. We don't have one, it's all dead. So it's just my view that I, I think the water resources are way too precious to be. Putting it on a, a lawn. That's just me.
You know, for a comment, I followed the water restrictions rigorously. My lawn did great. Okay, I noticed a lot of people did not follow the restrictions in my neighborhood, okay, and we didn't enforce it either. So we need to do a better job of getting that communicated out there. I think your lawn can make it. And I, and I think people, we need to do just a better job of getting that out there. I think we can overcome these, these kind of things and be smart with our water. And you can have your lawns, because mine made it, and I followed it rigorously. Uh, and it is not, it's not, it's not, it's not a resource that's just abundantly. It's all depending on precipitation. Um, and uh, I don't have a very great answer. There's great questions, trustee Gator, that you brought up, okay? Because that is concerning, and those are, I hear them too. How can you do that, yet you're doing this? But I think it's kind of a balancing act to get to the sweet spot where we finally have enough money with the impact fees. To offset some of the costs of the water treatment plant to get there, because you don't have a lot of sales tax revenue as well. And, and you're, you're trying to finesse this thing to the point where we have a, an upgrade in the water treatment plant. To take care of our shortages when we get there, and it's a balancing act to get there, and it's a managing act, balancing management. And that's what, we've got to do a better job, and we will be better prepared after knowing what we went through. To uh, uh educate our public on, you, you can have your lawn, you can water your flowers. Let's just, just be smart about it, follow these rules, and it's gonna make it. It's my, that's my thesis. And we need to do a better job of, you know, watering our own municipality areas, which is non-pot, but some of them are going off during the day. That sort of thing I saw. But anyway, that's what I got. Anyone else?
I'm really excited about the conservation um projects, because uh, and we need to change the language. So when people are coming to us and saying, you know, new houses are using water, we don't have enough water, we need to. Communicate with them with the peak times and all the things that we've learned in these meetings. Um, because if the, if the mindset is just not enough water, not just enough water, then that is always going to be the argument. And it doesn't really relate to our problems. So I guess from our perspective of the board, we can do better in communicating that as well. And I know with the conservation projects, it's gonna be huge as well. So I'm excited for that, but. But if we're hearing those same arguments over and over again, and they're based on logic that's not even what our actual issue might be completely. I think it's our responsibility as well to communicate that and correct it. So um, that's all I'm saying out there, but, but I appreciate it. And I'm really excited for those projects.
Any further comments?
So as we move forward, are we okay using the seventy-five-hundred-dollar tap fee?
Well, you're gonna run some numbers, right?
Right. But that's where we're gonna um be working towards is the seventy-five, see if we can get closer to the fifty-fifty. But uh, we need to get our information into the packet for the capital improvement plans. So knowing we will continue to tweak that, that's kind of the number we've been working with um to bring your, your capital. How much capital improvement can we do in addition to get this debt serviced?
Are we increasing both of those? Seventy-five-hundred-dollar fees, are we increasing both of those by two hundred dollars per year?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So there's the water and then the sewer, right? Is that, am I?
Correct, so right now, um, we're only looking at the water fund. Your water fund has a bigger hole in it, uh, because we didn't increase rates or in taps in about. I went back as far as ten years. So that's the one I'm working on, the, the, um, until I get the numbers from Dave. Which hopefully will be maybe this week still. Um, I don't want to jump the gun on the wastewater. I think the wastewater is in a better position right now, because their tap fees have been higher. And so the interesting thing is, it's the same amount of users, but one's been collecting seventy-five-hundred, and the other's only been collecting fifty-five-hundred. So I can't tell you, yes, what that rate's gonna, if there's gonna be a rate increase or what that rate looks like on the wastewater yet.
I would hate for us to get years down the road and say, well, it would have made sense to do, keep them consistent and moving them up each year. But, I mean, we have time and we're obviously monitoring it, but.
I suspect in about a month, we're gonna be having this identical conversation. Because we know the number of taps, we know the number of users, we just don't know the amount of the, the loan quite yet.
So I, I do have a question on the, you know, the potential increases fee. What is the rollout date? Is that? Next year? What is the implementation time period? Any, any sense of that?
I would like to tie it to the budget, so um, beginning in the beginning of the, um, in January, the fees. Give Cody a little bit of time to tell developers that are working on that. Um, certainly, I mean, if we need to adjust that, we adjust that, but again, it's the model that we were just trying to um. Kind of figure out how much of our capital improvement plans, um, what we can get done, service our debt. And provide our water.
Thank you, Mayor Hammond. Are we gonna be looking um at the commercial taps as well?
So that is my, um, as we move through that, there was, those are my closing comments, is there's two pieces um here. That we haven't talked about. We have a hundred and forty-six commercial. Um, so Tyler and I wanted to get into that model. And see, um, I want to really look at their consumption. Right now, we have the rates, uh, or I'm sorry, they're in one tier. And then uh Cody had a very interesting, um, and it might be, these are all things that would only make us better. Um, and if it turns out there, but the building, the water that these people use um during the construction season. So we wanted to look at the number on that as well. Um, but again, it, it won't change things so dramatically. That we could say we could get away without doing the tap fees. They may knock on the blow, but we don't know what that number is quite yet.
And I apologize, I know that you have said this number. Can you tell me what the current tap fee is?
So inside the water fund, fifty-five-hundred.
And the intended amount is seventy-five-hundred, correct?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
And I think as an additional answer to your question, uh, trustee McDonald, the um. The, the bigger the tap, the, the larger taps are basically calculated off of the base tap, which is the three-quarter inch. So by changing the three-quarter inch tap uh fee, that will ripple through the larger taps as well. And that's, that's kind of the best management practice for how uh tap fees are calculated. They're kind of based on that. That, that underlying that three-quarter inch base number, so those will be, there'll be a ripple effect, the ca- caused by that.
Other comments? Okay, thank you for your work. I like it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything next? Anything else? Kelly?
Just to um kind of wrap up tonight's conversation and remind the board where we're at, so. Um, budget adoption timeline. Um, so we have already talked about staffing and operations budget. Tonight, you've heard about the fund balance policy and water plant presentations. Next week, we'll be talking about our capital improvement plan. Is there anything remaining or lingering for the board that um? That we haven't talked about yet, or the presentations that you've seen that are still remaining questions, I think from personnel. All we heard was about that Parks and Recreation uh position, which we addressed tonight. Um, we just want to make sure that what, as we head into December eighth, um, that there's nothing still remaining for the board that we haven't answered for you. Um, and make sure that we're in a good spot.
Anything quick?
I mean, I don't want to drag this meeting out. I was under the impression we were gonna have a meeting where we could actually just kind of walk through the budget. I appreciate that we've broken things down and gone into detail in areas. Um, I only have a shortlist at the moment, but I've got. At least seven or eight different things already that I have some specific question on, so I, I don't know if we. Put some time into the twenty-fourth meeting. I don't know if we do that tonight. I don't know if we need to hold a separate meeting. I would prefer to have a meeting that is where we can actually just walk through, okay, are there specific questions, specific concern? Maybe I'm the only one, nobody else has any questions. If that's the case, then maybe I can just talk with um Judy one-on-one with regards to my questions. But to actually just go through the budget and address it, like we have, it's great, we have these specific things, but it's only addressing specific areas of the budget. There hasn't been just a general meeting where we could just focus on wherever in the budget you want to go, we can go and talk about that or deal with that, ask questions.
Well, I think there is gonna be that opportunity, trustee Gator, to do that, when we get this whole thing in front of us. But this is, I, you know, this is big, we're taking big chunks out of the way. If there are specific things that you think, I, I think you ought to. Ask the question, and, 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 and Kelly can, can, can forward that question to the rest of us. You know, so we can see what you're, what you're getting at, you know what I mean? Because if you're talking about a thirty-five-thousand-dollar item in there, you know, the budget, I, 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 I kind of like to. Get this big stuff out of the way, and then we get to that other, all that other, all those other things that are hiding in there. Lingering in there that, that are questionable, you know? I think it would be effective that way. And then, and do that way. I don't know. What do you guys think?
Trustee Gator, could you share with me the seven or eight items that you have questions on? And perhaps I could um then get them addressed for everyone, and I will um get that out to you. Um, with our, in our packet, so that everybody can see the questions, so we're not answering the same questions. Over and over, and it also may generate other questions, um, other trustees may have that they would like to address.
Sure. Um, so the first, and this is probably just a basic understanding on my end, what an FB is. Um, at the very beginning of the budget, we have these um FB um that's highlighted. And then it, within that, we're basically three million dollars over our revenues, so why? Um, that's a fairly major concern. Um, but there's multiple says required FB. I don't know if that's fund balance or what that stands for. So just clarification on that. Um, but then the fact that we're three million dollars over revenues with expenditures and what. At least, that's the impression that I'm getting, and maybe I'm not understanding things properly. Um, then with legislative, we have board outreach for eighty-thousand dollars, um, just under, wondering what that is for. Um, within the court, we got rid of the clerk position, it looks like, so understanding what was that. Um, still have a little bit of concern over adding the management analyst position in administration. Um, finance, there was a change. We had an increase in salaries, but a huge decrease in benefits. And then we also had a office space rental charge last year that we don't have this year. Um, and under planning, we have a travel and training increase, so what was that for? Um, and then I, my understanding is we're talking about um law enforcement next week, so I can, those questions can come at that point. Um, and I haven't gotten through it, but it's just general understanding of just different things that we're coming through, and just trying to make sure that I understand what's going on within the budget.
I, I've got some notes here, so I will uh. I will get um some information to Kelly, and then um she can tell me the best way to share that with you.
With trustee Gator, would you please email that to her specifically? So we can get good answers, because those are good points. Those are things that we like to ask, absolutely.
Ross, so here's the only concern I have with that. I'm fine emailing my notes. The concern that I have is. I, I don't like having official business, if you want to call it that, happening outside of the public eye. Like, it's great that it's getting done, and we're doing things above.
It's gonna come back to the public eye. She's gonna share it in, in session.
Well, is she gonna share it in session, or is it, because I'm understanding is I'm gonna email it to her, she's gonna get answers, email it back to the rest of the board, which is all fine. And then everything's above board, but the, the hard part for me is these are conversations that are all happening outside of the public, so the public has no clue. They're just gonna look at the budget and say, well, you guys just passed this budget, you never even went through or considered it, because all of that happened in emails back and forth. Outside of board meetings. That's, ye- yes, we addressed the larger issues, but then on the flip side. The only time that citizens really get an opportunity to weigh in on the budget is the day that we approve it, which at that point.
Yeah.
Really not changes to be made, because the only time that it's on the agenda that I understand is on the eighth of December, which is when we're approving it. The twenty-fourth, it's talking about a capital improvement plan, but there's not really, as, as I understand it, not really a budget session. We're gonna talk about that one specific area, but that's it. Um, and then we're gonna be adopting the full budget at the next meeting. So there's really no.
Could I make a suggestion for the board? I think during our, our meeting next week, maybe we, before we get into the capital improvement plan. Which will be done during the presentation portion of that meeting, if we take some time that we just have a general. Just budget overview right before that, and if other trustees have questions that we can just prep for in advance. And then we can answer them that night at the meeting, have additional discussion if needed. Um, how does the board feel about that? Uh, because you're right, it, it would be a little bit difficult if one trustee is getting information, and if there's lingering questions. We don't want to wait until the eighth to bring those up, if there's something substantial that we've got to modify. Um, Judy, does that work? Board, does that work if we just do it before our CIP and, and try to answer those questions next week?
If I could chime in real quick, this is Brad. That would certainly be my preference. I don't know that you have an open meetings issue, but I think it is of concern. And so if you could do that just before the next meeting and just have trustees sent up in, that would probably be the preference from my end.
Sounds good.
That would be fantastic. I would greatly appreciate that, and then I don't know the. Can we also leave that? I, I don't know that anyone from the public will have anything to say about the budget.
Have a chance.
Okay, can we just make a point to open that up for public this year?
Sure, sure, John. You bet. Set some time aside. Set a little time aside, sure. Set some time, Kelly.
Miss Hammond, I have a quick question for you and, and Crystal. Um, I know the requirements for a special district, but what are the requirements for a municipality and the, the budget posting? So for instance, I know that there is a notification that goes out in the newspaper and all of the legal classifieds. That the budgets generally posted for um the public to review, make any comments, and that sort of thing. Is that, is that the same for the town, and what does that look like yourself?
I would defer to Judy and Crystal on that one. Um, so feel free to chime in.
Sorry, I was muted. I was talking to myself. So. So what the information that we uh provide in the packet, and then when we have our preliminary budget. Um, we certainly can have, I mean, the, the public can ask questions on that. But as far as your legal uh, I, I think I will ask Crystal, because before um your legal requirements are different. I had to have a first and second reading where I was before, so Crystal. I, I think I will ask Crystal because before, um, your legal requirements are different, I had to have a first and second reading where I was before, so Crystal.
This is Crystal, um, I'll double-check on that publication, I know that there is a publication that goes out. Um, Judy, me and you can work on that to make sure we have that out and published correctly.
Thank you, yep.
So we're going to try to have this at our next meeting, that would hurt.
Correct, and I'm going to try to do a budget overview, um, just to generate and answer the questions that I heard, but then certainly answer any additional questions as well.
So, would you, would you like to see if, if, if any of us had some. Additional questions throughout the next couple of days or next week to get it into you, so you can get, do some homework first, so we're not, so you got some answers.
Absolutely, absolutely, and then we.
You don't want to sit there brainstorm, you want to have some answers, you know? Okay, so trustee Gator, good job bringing it up, get her your questions so we can get those kind of things hammered, because I know they're.
And I'll send the new ones I get over the next couple of days, so you'll have plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and please feel free to copy the rest of the board members so that we can. Know what we're missing or, 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 or see other things that stick out, okay?
So I'll copy Kelly on all of that and you can pass it on to the board as appropriate, Kelly, so.
Will do, thank you.
Anything else tonight, we good? Kelly, nothing else, whoa. I'm still here. Anything else, we're good? Thank you folks.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
All right, see you guys.
Okay.